It is six o'clock and it, believe it or not, it's six o'clock. When you look outside, it's hard to believe it's six o'clock. It's so light outside with the sun still up. So anyway, it's six o'clock and it is March the fourteenth. We are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. Candace will start with roll call. Barbara Doss?
Here. Ken Killian?
Yeah.
Eileen Nichols?
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
And Todd Casper is excused.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight is a public hearing about the CDBGCV grant. So, Joe, we will start with you.
Yes, thank you. So, one of the requirements of that grant, since a CDBG grant's a federal grant, they have a lot of requirements that goes with that. But they require two public hearings during, for that project. One, basically before we submit the application, so we held that previously. And then they require a second public hearing to be held during the project period. Typically, it's while the project is under construction. So that's the purpose of this public hearing this evening. And there's a required series of events that we have to cover, topics we have to cover. The main part is the update on the project itself. And I do have some photos just to go along with my discussion here. But just to, I mean, we refer to this as the inclusive playground project typically, but it technically has three components. It's the playground itself in Smith Park, which has playground and some parking improvements. We also have, the second part is an additional parking lot that is being added to Legion Field near the pickleball courts. And then the third part of it is the extension of the sidewalk, excuse me, on Second Street from Legion Field north to the city limits. So the main part of the project is the inclusive playground, which includes, obviously, the main installation of the playground equipment and surfacing and the company improvements to that. There's trail extensions within Smith Park, some replacement of trail. And there's also extension, insulation of some accessible parking along Fifth Avenue. That's included as part of that. So from a standpoint of where we are right now, I did have some photos here. So the project, for the most part, the playground equipment has been installed. There's some additional, I would say, minor equipment that has to be installed yet. The fence has been installed around the playground itself. There's a concrete sidewalk. There's also a perimeter around the inside of the fence around the playground. But you can, if you've been up there, you can see like the zip line, the actual cables have not been installed. Some of the sweet equipment have not been installed yet. Excuse me. There's some minor equipment. You can see it doesn't look like it's quite complete because it's not. But you can see in these pictures, kind of the main part of it is the surface itself, the rubber surface. We had hoped to get installed in the fall, but we ran out of nice weather. They have to have a certain temperature for a certain period of time for that project to go forward. And we kind of ran out of warm weather. So that's kind of the big part of it. The lights have been installed. You can see there's some pipes there in the picture that is some additional equipment that does have to go in. They did leave a section of fence on the east end that was done on purpose to allow the equipment to get in when they do the additional work on that. And obviously, around the playground itself, they have to come back and do some final grading and seating down of that area. Did include some replacement in some areas and installation of new trails sidewalks within the park in other areas. So that has all been installed, including lights along that center walkway through the park. That would be the parking, the accessible parking that's been installed along Fifth Avenue that has been installed, obviously, including the relocation of that trail on that side. They will have to come back in the spring and do the striping to designate, excuse me, the actual parking spaces. And although it's not part of the grant, it is kind of part of the project as far as we view it, was the remodeling of the stone shelter, additional sidewalks running to that, the concrete pavement within the shelter itself, re-tuck point, the bathrooms that were totally gutted and remodeled as well. But as I mentioned, that's technically not part of the grant. The second part of the project is insulation of a new parking lot off of Second Avenue within Legion Park, kind of between the pickleball courts and the horseshoe courts west of Brodsky Center. So that parking lot has been installed. The lights have been installed. They do have to come back later and do the second layer of the asphalt and then do the striping within the parking lot. And also, again, around the parking lot area, it does have to be the final grading and the seating of that area. And then the last part is basically from that parking lot along Second Street to the city limits was an extension of a sidewalk. Again, that has been installed. Basically, it runs through the city limits. You can see in the far left of that picture, connects to a trail that was installed by the township as part of that reconstruction of Second Avenue in the township. So again, the sidewalk itself has been installed, but they have to come back and do the final grading and seating to finish that off. So that's kind of the first part of the required public hearing is update on where we are with that project. The second requirement is to discuss any residential or business displacements, relocation, anything that had to be done as part of this project. In this particular project, there were no business or residential displacements. All the project took place within property that was already owned by the city, Smith Park, Legion Field, as well as city right of way. Actually, the only thing displaced were some trees and relocation would have been some of the playground equipment that got moved to other parks. So that was pretty straightforward. Third part is, well, third and fourth are not really related to the project itself, but it's an opportunity that the government wants us to take to obtain input from the community as far as really other activities in the community that could be future projects that we could apply for CDBG funds for. So one is housing needs within the community and that, we've never really taken a whole lot of advantage of that, but that is a big part of the CDBG project is to provide housing projects. I would mention that we did do the housing study 2019. We did some implementation as far as modifications to the ordinances to help implement some of the goals of that. We do have some funds available that we have. When we extended the TID four funds for an additional year, so to provide some affordable housing improvements. And I think at this point, we've got about $40,000 that's unexpended for that project. And then I would give an update at this point. So far this year, we've issued permits for eight, well, there'll be a nine-unit apartment building down in Fox Ridge, our southwest part of the city, and then eight single-family homes in the Keystone subdivision behind Menards. So a good start for housing for this year. And then the last part is just an opportunity for the public to provide feedback on either this project or, as I said, any anticipated or desired projects in the community that we might be able to apply for funding at some point in the future. And there are some folks here from the Playground Committee that are available to answer any questions on their portion of the project.
Any questions of Joe? Otherwise, we'll go to public statements in favor. I don't know what we'd be in favor of. Public statements again? Against? Are there any public statements in general? Do any of the leaders from the Playground Group want to make any statement or anything? Yes, in regard to the project and its progress? That is number four.
Christina Burr. I forget. I have to say my address and everything too. Getting used to this. 6826 Woodland Road, Platteville, Wisconsin. And I'm one of the co-leaders. Just saying that it's just been a pleasure to work with the city and the council and Park and Rec and Delta Three on this project and inspiring community has just been fantastic in helping lead us through this project and guide us on it. So just saying that it's going well. Actually, I thought number four on Joe's was other ideas for future CDBG grants.
Well, there's two number fours then. We're to number four on the public hearing agenda. Then you could also speak to number four, as long as you're up there, other CBDG grants.
Sure. Well, I think just part of this process, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, a lot of excitement for this inclusive playground coming to the community, but also a lot of ideas that people have shared about things that they think might enhance the community as well. So, Joe, you know whether or not things will qualify or not, but I can share a few of the ideas that have been shared with us. And you can always see if there anything that might interest in the future. One would be an indoor community facility, something that, not necessarily a why, but something that would have year-round capabilities for the community to use. Maybe an indoor climbing wall, indoor pool that has some features for families to use, kind of a sports and rec facility that could be used year round. That was something that had been shared with us. Another is a fishing pond. You can either go small scale like they have in Lancaster that would be free to the children in the community. I think there are a lot of opportunities, whether you consider the pond out behind the soccer fields, or I had someone mention to me just last week that even the kind of retention area across from the stop and go by the high school, that that might be an opportunity area where they could involve biology classes at the high school and things like that. Or you could consider going, someone else mentioned a retention pond kind of out by the hospital. It might also be an opportunity to expand. Wouldn't take much to turn it into a fishing pond. And I think there'd be people willing to stock it. Or you could go larger scale, make it something where you might be able to rent kayaks or canoes or things like that. Someone had mentioned to me the idea of a family museum or a children's museum in town. There's, you know, the Quad Cities and Madison and La Crosse and areas that have that, but something that would also be a year-round indoor family-friendly activity. And then people have mentioned a splash pad, although I know in discussions, it's really the upkeep of the splash pad that's the significant cost. And so I understand the limitations there and shared that with them when they asked about it. And then and then just some ideas for trail extension opportunities along, I don't know who owns, that we have the stream that goes behind the businesses and we have the trail that goes there. I don't know if we own the other side of that stream as well. But I've been in a community before where they had the path on both sides of the stream and they had a bridge every three quarters of a mile. It really makes a beautiful, it was like a six-mile beautiful loop. So, you know, potential for if we owned the other half of that, perhaps we could consider expanding our trail opportunity by having some bridges every so often in a walkway on both sides of the stream there. I think that'd be a really beautiful setting. So those are the ideas you can look into, Joe.
Thank you. Are there any other public statements in general? Or are there any other ideas for future CBDG grants? If not, we're at the council discussion portion. Anybody have anything they want to? Okay, then we're, I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Cop? Or, excuse me. Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cop?
Yes. Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda then is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have the council minutes from February 27th, special meeting, and the February 28th, regular meeting, payment of bills, financial reports for February, appointments to boards and commissions. I have none tonight. And licenses, we have a Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages and wine being issued, requested by the Platteville Public Library Foundation for their event scheduled for Saturday, April 26th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. That's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen, second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda as presented. Candace will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I'm going to invite Paul Erickson from UW Platteville to the podium.
Hello, Paul Erickson from UW Platteville Communications Office. First of all, I just want to thank the council for letting me, allowing me to be part of the search and screen for the city manager and giving one of the city tours. That was an awful fun to be part of that process. So, speaking of hiring processes, is wanting to give us a chancellor update on the search and screen. And I want to do this because we don't have everything set yet, but because we may be bedding up to the next council meeting, I thought I should just give you where we stand right now. We are getting close to having the finalists announced by system and having the open forums set on campus. We have set aside blocks on the end of the last week in March, the first week of April, the beginning of that, for potential candidates to come to campus. The open forum sessions will be at 3:00. And all this will be on our website. There's been a box on the first page of our website where you can go to click on information. You can see any updates that we've had. I think we last posted a couple of weeks ago. But we will have the candidates' names, schedule, all their background information there. System will be sending out a press release as well as soon as the finalists are all set and those schedules are. But again, I don't, since we're bumping up to the next council meeting, I just wanted to bring us up to date where we are, so.
Do you know where the open forum will be?
I think we have four of the five set in Nor Gallery, or the five-fold set for Nor Gallery. And then we're looking for another one. We don't know how many candidates are coming yet. So we just are trying to block off calendars as we can. And I would hope that the council and any concerned citizens would like to join us for those.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments or observations? Bob, do you want me to announce or do you want? We are, we received an invitation. Well, I guess it was a Facebook post, so it's anybody's invitation. The school district is going to hold a groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, March 31st, at 3:00 in the afternoon for the new activities complex, which is located behind or north of the high school. So certainly, everyone is invited. And I think I also sent that to all of you otherwise, but announcing the groundbreaking ceremony for March 31st at 3:00 p.m. for the Platteville Public Schools. I think we should also announce the fact that there's going to be a pancake breakfast from the fire department. That pancake breakfast is traditionally home Sunday, the Sunday before Easter, which I believe is April the second. We're all looking at our, we're all looking to see, is that the second, the third, or the fourth? But it is the Sunday. And I think it's, it's the second, April 2nd. So pancake breakfast, April 2nd, it's always held now at the high school. So it'll be at the high school. There is also the lyceum program for the museum is continuing, 5:00 on Sundays. So if you haven't participated, this will be number four of seven this coming weekend. Any other announcements anybody would like to make? Okay, then let's go on to the reports that were in the packet. Historic Preservation Commission Minutes, Ken?
I have no addition.
Housing Authority, Eileen? Okay, the other reports that were in your, in your packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, and the Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move to our action items tonight. The first is Contract 3-23 Keystone Development, TID 5 Keystone Development Sidewalk Installation, Howard?
Yes, thank you. This project will complete sidewalk on that block that has frontage on both Progressive Parkway and Business 151. The sidewalk has been completed from McDonald's West Arby's. This would finish the sidewalk on that block. It would, the intent is to charge as a TID 5 expense and then be reimbursed for the Progressive Parkway and Business 151 frontages for the Starbucks U.S. Cellular parcel. The sidewalk along the Keystone Parkway frontage and sidewalk running Pioneer Management properties would be absorbed by TID 5. The developer that's coming up later here in the, on the agenda, is going to install sidewalk at their expense on that one vacant parcel. So what we're recommending is that, that we award this bid to Owens Excavating at the bid price of $75,406.25. The amount that would be coming from the TID itself would be $61,038.75. So there's just a minor change to what we had originally estimated would come from the TID.
Questions? So I see the allocation of the cost to the Starbucks and U.S. Cellular project is 29. Does that, is that based on the total cost of the project, the $90,000?
It's, it's based on actual costs for their frontages and
And associated
And percentages for engineering and other group costs, yes.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to award Contract 3.23 Sidewalk Installation to Owens Excavating at the bid price of $75,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Lynn to award Contract 3-23 Sidewalk Installation to Owens Excavating, Excavating, pardon me. Candace will vote. Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on our action agenda is Contracts 6-23 Sidewalk Repair.
Yes. This is our annual sidewalk repair contract. Last year, we had no bidders. So we're requesting carryover of the balance from 2022, add to the $30,000 in the 2023 CIP budget. We opened up two bids. Low bidder is G Pro Excavating with the low bid at just under $55,000. We do have enough from both last year and this year to do that. Last time, we talked about the amounts of sidewalk. I can repeat those if you want. We had, you know, 2250 square feet of four-inch, 1,250 feet of new six-inch and 10 warning fields. And then on your table, I also put a map because I believe that we had a request as to where these locations were. So that just shows you generally where those repair locations will be for this year. So I recommend that we award to G Pro.
Okay, questions of Howard on the sidewalk?
Just real quickly, the background, as far as the city is concerned, with G Pro Excavating? Have they?
They've done many different projects
For us.
For us. Most recently, they did the Hickory and Gridley project that had sidewalk on it last year, and then the UW P sewer project.
And everything's satisfactory?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And didn't they fill in a little and help out on the West Main Street project, kind of at the end when we took it over? I thought I
I think they did. I think they did a little bit as a subcontractor, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Is there a priority to where they're going to start and how they're going to already in the areas?
I'm sorry. Not necessarily. I mean, it's kind of fill-in work for these folks as much as we can. They, they, they remove certain squares of sidewalk and then they'll, then they'll do like a block or a small area and then they'll move on and do more. You know, we'll work with businesses and such as much as we can to help coordinate some of that.
So it's not like a digger is coming in and doing like a road, when we do a road project. This is more, this block is, this concrete block is broken, or this one's been uplifted by a tree, or
Exactly.
This one, you know, something like that.
I mean, and for example, there's, there's like a half a dozen of them on, on East Mineral Street. They may end up doing all of those all at once as a convenience for them and for the neighborhood, but they may skip a while before they do another area.
That was why I asked, because yeah, I do notice that there are lots of that are together. And then they're like, one on this other street, one way over here. And I was just wondering if there was a plan, but I trust the process. I just was wondering.
Okay, any other questions? Eileen?
How are the blue dots indicate sidewalk replacement with new detectable warning field? What does that mean?
The, the panels with the bumps on them at the, at the intersections? So, so those need to be replaced in different locations.
I would move to award Contract 623 to G Pro Excavating at the bid price of Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Lynn to award Contract 623 to G Pro Excavating. Candace will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next action, action item on our agenda is the revisions to the employee handbook. Nicholas?
So back in 2018, an effort was undertaken to go through the old employee handbook and rewrite it. There was out-of-date information in there. There was antiquated language. There were some policies that were missing and some policies that were no longer relevant. And so that process took most of 2018 and it included having a review by city legal counsel, by our insurance advisors, by an employee advisory team, by the department directors, and by the common council as well. And through those committees and advisors and through the council, we received feedback and we incorporated various edits and changes and ultimately brought the completed draft to the council for adoption. And so that took place on February 26th of 2019. And the handbook was adopted by the council. But from time to time, it is prudent to update the handbook to keep it current. We've received feedback from the council that when new policies are developed or if a policy is changed, that at that time, that that comes to the council, it should also be noted that it will be then incorporated into the handbook rather than having to bring the handbook itself back to the council. But in this case, we do need to have council approval of these various edits, most of which are minor in routine and nature. And the revisions that are being presented for the council's review and approval are as follows. Pronoun usage has been Pronoun usage has been updated throughout the documents. There have been edits to punctuation, spelling, and grammar. The personnel file access and background checks language has been updated to reflect that we have a human resources manager. Uh, the float holiday and vacation table have been updated uh, based on, uh, common council approval of our new float holiday and vacation policies. Uh, the unused sick leave on termination. Uh, this is one, um, area that has not been previously reviewed by the council, and that is to, uh, have language added that clarifies that employees must have worked for the city for at least seven years to qualify for payout of unused sick leave. Um, previously, the language read as an and slash or. In other words, it read as either retiring from employment or, um, I'm sorry, that's the language that we're changing it to, that they, uh, they would need to have uh, been with the city for seven years and then upon retirement, um, or having separated from the city, they would receive the payout of that sick leave bank. Previously, um, it implied that if one was to retire from the city, one did not need to have worked here for seven years in order to qualify for that benefit. Um, so that's the language change. Now somebody would need to have been with the city for seven years, um, before retirement in order to qualify. However, as has been our policy in the past, when we change something like this, we grandfather co- employees. So this would apply to newly hired employees from, um, this date forward if, uh, in fact, this is adopted by the council. Um, the footnote, uh, has been updated to reflect, uh, the grandfathering of current employees. Uh, so that, in other words, if somebody was here currently and were to retire before having worked for seven years, they would still be eligible for payout of any unused sick leave. I'm gonna pause there for a moment and just ask if there's any questions on that particular part? No? Okay. So then, uh, going forward through these changes, a footnote was removed that was a previous grandfather that no longer applies as, uh, there aren't any current employees that are still grandfathered under that policy. Uh, the funeral leave has been reclassified uh, for a step s- a step sibling to be considered as immediate family. Uh, the special leave of absence with or without pay has been edited in its language to provide clarity. The dispatch work schedule has been added to the overtime policy and a correction was made to a policy title reference yeah, on page twenty-nine regarding harassment and respectful behavior policy. So those are the changes that, uh, are being brought forward, the revisions. And so staff's recommendation is for the council to approve those revisions to the handbook.
Okay. Questions? Kathy?
I have one. Um, can you explain the number? Special leave of absence with or without pay? Edited the language to clarify. What does the new language say?
Sure, let me just get to that page number. Okay, so the old language said, employees will have the option of carrying benefits on an individual cost basis at the employee's expense if permitted by the plan. And the new language says, employees will have the option of continuing to carry elected benefits at the employee's expense if permitted by the plan. We felt that the prior language was confusing. Staff weren't sure themselves what exactly it was trying to say. So we clarified it so that it would be clear to employees and to staff as what was meant by that sentence.
And that was page?
Uh, actually, um, because of the, uh, language edits being visual, it's, the page is actually twenty-one. Everything got pushed down a little bit. Special leave of absence with or without paying.
Other questions? Jason? Eileen? Ken?
Yes, thank you. I went through this, uh, document and I was looking for any errors and I found, uh, things and, and things I consider should be looked at. And so I have about twenty items. So do you wanna cover those tonight or should we cover those?
I, I would say if the items that you have relate to the revisions
that are being proposed, then we should cover them tonight. If they were, refer to language that was previously adopted by the council, then that would be a separate consideration that we could, um, maybe have a work session with the council to cover those items. So if they relate to the things that were listed, pronoun usage, edits in punctuation, spelling, or grammar, uh, the, uh, reflecting the addition of a human resource manager so that that, uh, is reflected in the language, um, adopting the floating policy, holiday, or putting into the handbook our current floating holiday policy, which was changed but hasn't been put in the handbook. You have every, uh, same thing with the vacation table, which the common council approved, changing, but was never put in the handbook. The clear, we just talked about clarifying the unused sick leave, uh, and, uh, we talked about the, uh, classifying a step sibling as an immediate family. So if it's any of these things, then we would discuss those. Otherwise, I would suspect you should discuss those with the, any other things that you find, uh, should be forwarded either to me or to Nicola or to Chad, our human resource manager.
Well, my, my comments don't relate to these. There are things like typos and so forth.
Okay, so I.
I would like them looked at because I think.
So if there's typos, I mean, I think, yeah. Again, I don't know who holds the key to this document. Who's the, who's the master of the document to make typographical? I mean, we aren't going to approve or disa- I mean, we're not gonna put tiger typographic if there's words misspelled. Just like if there's punctuation or stuff, we're not going to go through all that here tonight. No, and I apologize if we missed a typo or a punctuation, um, issue. But I think for, for ease for the council tonight, we should just address the ones that have previously been identified in this list and then we can certainly, um, circle back uh, if there's any other typos and bring those forward the next time we have to do a revision.
I was looking also at, um, information received, um, a while back, and that was for the, uh, changes of February twenty, twenty nineteen. And this is, um, a letter to you and also Karen Kirk. And so there are some things in there that, uh, looked at that I, I don't understand. I don't, I don't understand why they're being used.
Okay, so that.
Should mean.
Okay, so that was a letter from Von Breeden. And did they do the, um, review of the handbook before it was adopted?
They did, yes.
So that's the letter he's referencing. Okay, okay. So we have these, uh, wrote, um, revisions, um. We've had some discussion. Do I have a motion?
To approve the revisions of the City of Platteville Handbook, Employee Handbook as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, motion by Jason and a second by Eileen to approve the revisions to the City of Platteville Employee Handbook as they have been presented tonight. Uh, Candace will vote. Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next, uh, those are the, that's the end of the action items in our, uh, agenda tonight. So now we'll move on to the, uh, information items, the first of which is a conditional use permit, tidal wave car wash at sixteen fifty-one Progressive Parkway. Joe?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, yeah, we received the application for, uh, condition use permit. Uh, this property is located between Pioneer Property Management and the Arby's. Uh, it's property Howard mentioned regarding the sidewalks that, um, they will be installing the sidewalks as part of this, uh, development along their frontages. So that property does have two frontages, um, like all the project properties on that, that block, but, uh, access to the car wash will be from Progressive Parkway. It includes obviously the car washer, in this case, auto spa, uh, building, uh, as well as some, uh, ve- uh, vehicle vacuum, uh, side or stations, whatever you wanna call them. Some of them are covered, some of them are not covered. But under our ordinance, um, car washes are a condition use permit basically. So it gives us the opportunity to look at the layout, uh, where it's located and so forth. Uh, it's a kind of a, a few key features that we wanna, uh, take a look at. One is to make sure there's no vehicle stacking area so that if people are waiting in line to use the car wash, that they don't back up into the street to create a traffic problem. Uh, also on the other end, as they're exiting and the, the vehicles are coming out of the building and they're wet, um, if they're dripping water i- in the winter that we don't wanna have to deal with icy areas on the street. If it happens on their parking lot, then they have to deal with it rather than the city crew. And kind of the, the third, uh, item that occasionally is a concern is the noise. Um, most of those car wash facilities nowadays have a dryer, uh, built into them. So we wanna make sure there aren't any, you know, residential properties nearby that would have an issue with that. Um, and I did, or they were aware of it through reading our ordinance and also through preliminary meetings. So they did send some studies, uh, along for previous facilities that they had installed regarding, uh, the noise, uh, studies for those, uh, properties. Um, and I did wanna point out that I included some photos in the packet and those are, um, pictures that I took from, uh, the Dubuque property, which seems to be very similar as far as layout and the, the building design and so forth. So it should give you a pretty good example of what this, uh, project will look like. Uh, if you're interested in taking a look at it, so, uh, by the Coles, uh, department store on the west side of Dubuque. But anyway, this did go to the plant commission for their review. Uh, they did recommend approval. There are two items that, uh, were discussed. The, uh, the site plan that was submitted only showed a sidewalk along, uh, one, one of the street frontages. So we just wanted, we, we have talked to them and they, that was an oversight on their part, but just for, make sure it's covered. We did wanna make that a condition of approval, that the sidewalk should be installed along both street frontages. And then there was some discussion at the plant commission level about the, the stormwater management for this property. Um, this property as well as those other, uh, commercial properties along that frontage are actually served by a regional pond. Uh, but there is a maximum lot coverage that's covered in that. Um, and we misspoke at the plant commission level. We mentioned seventy-five percent the, uh, or, or the pond was actually designed for maximum lot coverage of eighty-five percent. Um, so this, uh, project should be in conformance with that guidelines. Uh, we are trying to determine, I guess, there, there are also some covenants that the seller put on the property regarding, um, stormwater. So they have to work out those details. We don't regu- regulate that, that would be between the buyer and the seller. But they are aware of those requirements. But again, just to make sure our bases are covered, that is also included as a recommendation that if the, uh, lot coverage exceeds the design capacity, they have to take care of that additional coverage on site. So with those two conditions, staff would recommend approval as well.
Okay, this is on for discussion tonight. Any question? Todd, you think?
No questions, just comment. I had the ability to go through the, uh, Dubuque Car Wash a couple of times. It's a very pleasant experience. It's very well-developed. It's made to be an experience with the lights and the smells and the, the bubbles. And it seemed to make far less noise than a truck pull at Dairy Day. So I was pleased with that also.
Go. Lynn, anything?
No.
Ken?
Underneath the narrative, there's one paragraph. There's no page number here, so. Narrative, um, the first words are the proposed use will promote water conservation. So, uh, looking down that, have you found that, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, another benefit of the proposed use is a professional wash will empty filter waste into the sewer system for further treatment. So they're saying they're implementing it in, into the sewer system for the City of Platteville. Is that what they're saying?
Well.
What treatment is there in the sewer system? Does it go through the sewer? Down the sewer plant?
The internal, uh, internal to the building would go, uh, down to the, uh, sewer plant. Uh, any of the external, uh, drip off of the cars would go into the storm sewers and go through the storm sewer pond that we were talking about, the regional pond.
I wasn't clear about that. Then the other thing is, um, getting to, uh, the noise. My, my question is, um, how close is the noise gonna be? Whatever the source of noise for this facility, how close will it be to people walking along, going into another business or walking nearby? Now that would be way back on, um, where they start talking. Again, they get no page numbers. Table one, sound levels at measurement locations. So I'm asking here, what is gonna be the closest location as far as the people by any part of this facility that's making noise?
But Joe, that's, uh, tidal wave Sharpsburg, page two, that table.
So if you get, get that, uh, determined, I, I've looked at their diagrams here and I'm trying, trying to read these things. And so I'm, I'm trying to just, simply to ask you, how close will they be to people walking along?
So I, I would say if you, based on the site plan, um, from when the exit of the, the south end of that building is where the, the blower would be to where the public sidewalk will be installed. Well, actually, I'd say to the property line is gonna be about thirty-eight, thirty-nine feet. And then sidewalk will be, you know, beyond that.
So what, so my question is, what's the noise level at that point? So maybe you'll have to look it up or study it for next time.
But I had one thing. Looking it up in Google right now for the noise level decibel chart. The highest we have is eighty-two feet and that's twenty-five, or eighty-two decimals at twenty-five feet. That'd be the equivalent to drilling or sanding or a loud radio. When we get down to seventy-eight, we're talking about somewhere between the sounds of an office, listening to music or busy traffic and a dog barking. We get down to seventy-five or thereabouts, we're almost at the level of conservation or conversation, which is between sixty and seventy. So we're talking about a, if, if, if this chart is to believe, be believed on Google, that, uh, the loudest noise we're gonna have out there is a, a loud radio and that's twenty-five feet away. So it looks like the rest of it will be between office sounds and listening to music. Going out to a hundred feet, and I'd say at a hundred feet, you probably got louder noise coming from Menards. But just something to compare it to, of course, that's all. I see, I think they put that on the back of the table too, also some comparisons. Now that I turned the page, I guess I didn't have to go into that.
Okay, Ken, do you have additional questions?
That's the last one.
Kathy, any questions?
I do, um, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it, but, um, is there, I understand it went to plant commission. Any concerns with the amount of water used? Not gonna affect our well? Or for usage, that's all?
No.
That's all good?
And, and actually, that's one of the things that they, they talk about in their study is the majority of their water, they reuse, they filter it. And then it's basically the, the final rinse is, is fresh water. And then it's basically the, the final rinse is, is fresh water. Um, so they try to limit the amount of water that they actually consume to the greatest extent possible. But then once it gets beyond that, then as Howard mentioned, it does go down, um, to the treatment facility.
Any other questions Kathy? Jason? Eileen? Okay, uh, Ken brought up the fact that this is going to be, uh, the filtered water is going to be introduced into our sewer system. And it talks about, uh, why that's good because harmful cleaning chemicals and phosphates won't be going into the storm sewer. So will these folks be needing an industrial permit for their water? And how will we monitor the increased, uh, load at our water at our, at our sewer, at our utility plant?
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, and, and have the eighty-five percent, is that written in our code someplace or what?
That, that was, uh, in the design calculations when the, uh, regional pond was put in back in oh-six or so.
I believe at the plan commission, somebody said they should have known that it was in our, it's in our information that we share.
Oh. That, that number is from the, the design report for the Keystone Development Properties overall. That includes the stormwater pond that's behind the Millennium Theater. That was, that was part of the design calculations that were done as for that entire, uh, area. I misspoke and I said seventy-five at the plan commission. It should have been eighty-five based on the report.
I understand that, but there was also a remark made that we shouldn't have to worry about that because they knew that it was in the materials they would have received or been party to.
I, I believe so, yes.
Pardon?
They did design it according to that number.
According to the eighty-five percent number. So are you also at the next meeting going to have the percent coverage of the lot?
Yeah, that's, that's in there, but we've asked for clarification.
Any other questions on the title wave auto spa? Yeah, gonna call it a car wash, I guess. They're having an auto spa. Okay, next, contract one dash twenty-three, Jefferson Street Reconstruction.
Thank you. The, this is our major street project for the year. Um, point one-five miles from Madison Street up to the cul-de-sac. Uh, it also includes replacement, relocation and upsizing of sanitary and storm sewers from Case Street through the backyards to the bend in Jefferson Street. We opened three bids. Low bidder is temporally excavating. The last, most recent project that they did was Southport Street Water Main. Uh, I believe one person on the council should know very much about that one. Um, the low bid was, uh, nine fifty-nine, seven thirty and twenty. Uh, Delta Three has provided recommendation letter and bid tabulation. It did come in under budget, most of it on the water and sewer portion of this. Um, so we're recommending that we award this to temporally excavating at the bid price for next time.
Okay, questions on the, uh, bid from temporally, or the, this project on Jefferson Street and awarding the bid at our next meeting to, uh, temporally excavating for Jefferson Street Reconstruction. They would also do the water and sewer project.
Correct. Water and sewer did approve their portion at their meeting.
Questions? There are no questions. We'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the, uh, annual storm water report.
Yes, thank you. Um, we have a, uh, municipal separate storm sewer system, commonly called MS four permit from the DNR regarding stormwater management. One of the requirements is to provide an annual report by March thirty-first of every year. This is similar to last year's report with basically just revised data for, for budgets. Uh, the amount of salt applied and the number of, uh, permits granted. You know, there are six categories that we have to, uh, explain. So, uh, that's also included. Uh, we also included funds for Delta Three to review our illicit discharge detection by inspecting and documenting the outfalls, that, that's where the water comes out of our pipes and enters the Roundtree branch. Um, that, uh, report is available upon request. Um, so this is for information only. Uh, so that you're aware of what's happening before we send it to the DNR.
Okay, so this is not an action item and won't be an action item. It is merely a report that, uh, we review. I believe we reviewed it. And, uh, so if anybody has a question, its due date is?
March thirty-first, so.
I thought it's, yeah. So there's plenty of time if anybody has questions. But, um, presented to you as a report with, uh, modifications, but no significant changes from last year.
Correct.
Any questions on the annual storm water report?
My general question is, how much of a document are you going to send them?
The, uh.
About a hundred and forty-seven pages, so.
Oh, the, the hundred and forty-seven pages, we don't send them, that's.
And so you're just going to send?
We're, we're going to send this computer.
It's an online application?
Application report that, uh, we provided in, in the council packet. Like I said, if you want to see the, the other report, we have that available for you. Uh, printed copy there by Collette's desk, uh, if anyone wants to look at it. Or we can provide it online for those who wish an electronic version.
So most of these reports, Howard, have moved on to an online submission, is that correct?
Correct.
And then the, um, all these places were, check this year, what is that, seventy-two or something like that? So you had people from Delta Three go out and check them. So what do you do as, as far as checking? What is checking involved?
Okay. Do that, thank you.
Essentially what they're looking for is, um, we have to do it during a period of dry weather where it hasn't rained for at least twenty-four hours prior. And what they're looking for is a storm sewer, um, end wall or just a pipe protruding that has water running in it. Um, typically they're dry. We don't have a lot of springs in town that are running. And so if you look at it and it has a weird color, weird order, or you see unusual staining, um, other than, um, say the rusting from a corrugated metal pipe, um, then we document it. Um, I believe this year we didn't find any that were in that type of condition. And if I recall, I don't think we've ever found anything, correct, Howard?
I, I think there may have been one, uh, four or five years ago, but it was, uh, you know, I think somebody had, uh, washed out a paint can or something like that.
Yep, I remember that. Or there was just some paint residue in there. But unfortunately, you see that, uh, time to time, someone's cleaning out their paint in the street and has worked, made its way down to the storm sewer. But, um, essentially, you know, and so we document it, we compare it from year to year. We take pictures every year. And just put it, the, the, the report is essentially just a summary of that. Um, that's one part of it. And while we're there, we also make notes if there may be debris that needs to be cleaned up or if it's been, a tree's fallen over it or a vegetation has grown over it where it's preventing it from discharging. And we make a note and we give that list to Howard and he forwards it on to the street department. And that's just while we're there, just as something to, to help out with.
Ken, you have to move closer to the microphone.
And what do you, what have you done in the past?
Terms of treatment?
Treatment, yeah. What, what are you, what are you going to do?
Um, so for example, uh, at one time, the end wall section had come, come off of the pipe. So we recommended for them to reattach it so that we didn't have any, any issues with that. So it's just, it's very minor stuff that we're suggesting to them. If you find that there's illicit discharge, um, then we have to go back and track the source of it. Um, and they're not necessarily looking for someone who washed out paint in the street. They're looking for an industry or something that's actually leaching into the storm sewer. That's an actual cause that looks like it's pollution. That's what they're really looking for, so it doesn't enter the stream.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody with, anybody else with questions? All right, well, that concludes the, uh, information and discussion portion of our agenda. We do have a closed session scheduled now. And I would also note that we will be reconvening the open session after this closed session. So I would take a motion to go to closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, this would be city manager contract.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go to closed session. Again, I will announce that we will come back into open session afterward to take action, likely take action. Uh, Candace will vote.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have returned to open session, uh, for action.
I move to approve Clinton Langreth as the next city manager for Plattville with a start date of May first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Clint Langreth as our city manager with an effective start date of May one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and we'll vote, Candace.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, I thank everyone who participated in the process. Uh, Paul talked today about being a tour guide. Uh, we had Tammy, uh, Richter from the hospital and, um, Tim Zauki, uh, from, uh, Thrivent who helped out. We also had Jim Babel and Tammy Ivetovich and Julie Stevenson meet with all of these candidates during that tour. To say nothing of all the people who turned out on a really snowy Thursday night to meet our candidates and all the work that our staff have put in to make sure that our candidates, you know, it, this is a two-way process. And I think Plattville does it well. We are recruiting, but we are also selling. And so thank you to everyone who was involved in this. We have a great community and it showed.